All right, here we go. It's ready for our second meeting on the budget. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's a good thing YouTube video is working because now Nathan can sit at home and watch, watch the meeting.
Hi, Nathan.
All right, the roll call will show that everyone is in attendance this evening. And let's move on for tonight's review, and we'll start with Brad at the Police Department.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Okay, the department summary is on tab E, page thirty-nine. And the accomplishments from last year is that we updated our body and car camera system from Motorola, and that we actually got a couple of patrol cars delivered to us. So that's, doesn't seem like it should be a big deal, but the last few years it's kind of messed with our rotation. So next year's initiative, and we'll talk a little bit more about this as we go through the budget, but the school resource officer with the Carroll Community School District is on that agenda, and replacement of rifles in the patrol cars also on the agenda. First, I'll go over the general fund, the actual full budgets on tab F, page eighty-seven, so however you choose to follow along. The license, or the revenue portion of the budget is pretty similar for licenses, permits, and also in our governmental. The largest jump will be miscellaneous revenues. So the school resource officer if approved, which the school currently has a draft of our twenty-eight E that we put together with myself and Dave Bruner had put it together. The school has it for their review. We have not heard back from them yet for any changes, or when they're going to discuss it in their board. So once they kind of get to that point, we'll bring it to you guys for discussion for the twenty-eight E that we have created with the school. But the largest part on here that you'll see for our revenues is that the draft right now has seventy percent of the salary, so wages and benefits being covered by the school district, and thirty percent by the City of Carroll. So that's where that revenue will come from, that big jump there. It's eighty, eighty thousand and, I can't remember the exact dollar amount, but just over eighty thousand is the amount that the school will be contributing towards the officer per year, if we go to the, if we get them to go with the school resource officer. So that's the major jump for the, for the revenue for the general fund for the police department. Uh, expenses, major jump there is salaries. Now, this also includes the new off, a new officer to backfill for the school resource officer. So that's why the, the percentage jump from the personnel services is quite a bit higher than the four point seven five percent that the union contract has in place for next year. Um, that also, so that includes that new officer, so it'd be the sixteenth full-time officer. Um, services and commodities is down a little bit. We went through and like, we talked about before, we kind of sharpened our pencil a little bit, removed some items on there. And then our capital outlay for the next coming year, the only additional expense, we have one patrol car for replacements. And then I did increase the office equipment replacements, which is where we cover our computer costs from, only because, uh, computer costs have gone up quite substantially. So I, just a thousand dollars is what went up. And then the police equipment replacement, twenty thousand dollars for patrol rifles in the car. Uh, the rifles are currently from two thousand and eight, I believe is when we put them in there. We've had some upgrades to them with optics and things that we're going to transfer things over, but they're to the point where we're going through qualifications, we're having some failures, and we're doing some maintenance on them, and it's to the point now where we're going to put a lot of money into them, or we'll just have to trade them off. And there'll be some trade value that'll come back too, because the company that we buy from will trade the guns back to, or trade our guns to them, so we'll see some discount there. But the twenty thousand dollars is a pretty rough estimate as to how much it's going to cost us before the trade value. So that, that could come down, hopefully, it'll hopefully to come down. Um, the total budget for the general fund is two, two million, three hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven, which is a hundred and ninety-three and some change higher than it was for this current fiscal year. Large chunk of that, like I said, is the salary. Yep, salary increases is the biggest percent on there. So any questions on the general fund portion of the budget?
Brad, you said that you had to lower your services and commodity, or you got rid of some stuff. Would you have to take out of there?
Didn't really get rid of some stuff, but, um, so the, took a thousand dollars out of repair and maintenance of vehicles. I was just kind of looking back over the years how much we have actually spent and just seeing where we're at. So I took a thousand out of that, and I think we'll be able to cover consultation and professional fees, which is what we pay any outside attorneys typically for when we do contract negotiations, or if we have any disciplinary issues that we run by them. So we do not have a contract negotiation this year, this coming budget year. So I took that, or actually, technically we do, but it's only for wages, it's not a full contract. So we're hoping that that cost will be a little bit lower, because I don't, hopefully they don't have to put as many hours in as they normally would for a full contract negotiation. So I took two thousand out of that. Um, nuisance abatement costs, I took three thousand of that, that moved to the building department. So yeah, it looks like it came out of mine, but we're still, still within the general fund because the building department's going to pick up that expenses. And that's just what we use to pay, um, for any contracts that, contract workers that do cleanup for us, mow yards, scoop snow, whatever it could be. I used to take care of the bills, now, um, they'll just come out of the building department's bills. And then office machine contracts, I was able to remove three thousand dollars out of that. One of the biggest things is some of our office, three sixty-five, they don't have everybody on that. Like, we had planned initially, um, we're still running different, some different office Microsoft software, so we're not having to switch everybody over to that. Um, office supplies, just dropped that down to five hundred. Um, training supplies, I took three thousand out of that, and a thousand out of the investigations. Training supplies is anything from, we do have some ammo in there, targets, um, kind of list anything that falls into training supplies, we removed out of that. And then investigations is what we use for, uh, we have some cameras that we have some software fees. That was just kind of looking at that too, how much do we actually spend? And so that's why, was, I thought we were able to remove a thousand dollars out of that and still be able to cover that, that line item.
Brad, what are we doing with these old, as we get these new cars in, what are we doing with these old cars?
We've been selling them on gov deals, and the last one we sold for thirteen thousand, five hundred, I think, which I believe, talking with Kyle, we thought was probably better than the trade-in value we're going to get. So we've had pretty good luck so far with gov deals, and that's what we'll continue to try to do. I know the dealerships don't always like the trade-ins either, I think they're harder to kind of turn around and sell. So gov deals has worked, I think we've got pretty good profit on them. And we've sold, I think I sold the dump truck for the parks department. We've sold three or four vehicles through there, and we've had, we've had pretty good success with that. So that's what we'll keep doing. It's just an online auction site.
Do we just, before we sell these, make sure that somebody doesn't need a car? Because I'm starting to notice as we go through these budgets over the last two years.
We certainly can, if it's something.
Everybody needs, everybody needs a car.
We did transfer one, oh, it's probably been three to four years ago now that the building department does operate. So I would say some of our cars may not be the best ones to slide into another department. So I have two cars that right now have, we try to get rid of them at about a hundred thousand miles because our, the Fords have a ten-year, a hundred thousand mile warranty on the powertrain part of it. And I have one that's at a hundred and ten right now, and one that's a hundred and eight. So if we want to slide those two to some other department, maybe taking a risk of some expensive repairs.
I know there's probably a year, a year and a half ago, there was a water pump that was done on one, it was.
Oh, I think, I think I've done four water pumps, and then it's, yeah, it's not cheap.
Four to five grand on that, so.
I don't know if the new car water pump's different, but that was the older model that we did water pumps on, the model that is currently sitting out here in the parking lot, that model, and it was, that was, those are big expenses. But I think I've done four of those water pumps. But yeah, there's so, some of the cars are, would be okay to move over. Other ones, I would probably say, let's get rid of them. So if we have one that's definitely worthwhile, and that's the one that went to the building department, was one of those that was in pretty good shape, but then the water pump out, of course, so had a huge expense with that.
I think the gov deals makes it more of a competitive bidding process, too.
It's been easy, and I, and we had a, one of the cars we got rid of was our K-9 car. And so, um, either Audubon or Shelby County was, or maybe the PDs and one of those, I can't remember which one it was, had inquired about it, and then they kind of lost interest, and so we put on gov deals. But we would have loved to sell it to them, keep it local, and they would, you know, we'd make them pay trade-in value, but they kind of lost interest. So gov deals, so far, has worked out pretty well.
When you sell a car on that, do we have to stand by it in any way in a, on a?
As-is, nope, as-is. Yeah, there's a lot of disclaimers and stuff that are created through gov deals, and it takes all of the pressure and warranty off of, or any requirement off of us. If they pay for transport, or, because the last one went to Chicago, and a transport company came and picked it up. So it's, it's, it's been pretty seamless. And payment comes from gov deals, so we don't have to worry about hassling for getting payments from the subjects we sell to either.
Brad, this dog care contract.
That is, so that is our monthly fee that we pay to the Carroll Vet Clinic to, to take care of any stray animals that we pick up. So it's anything from, we've taken chickens there recently, to dogs and cats. And then it's what, it's the fee that we pay them. So, um, it's, it's one of those contracts where some months we probably don't spend every, we probably don't give them enough to cover our costs, other months we're well above than what we do. So they'll, they'll euthanize for us if we need to, or we've brought in dogs that have been injured in car accidents, or, you know, we can't find the owner because it was, it was running loose and got hit by a car. And so they'll either euthanize, or they'll, sometimes if the rescue league's interested, they'll try to fix them up too. So I think they, the fee is probably pretty reasonable, but it were, it's our only place to go, so we're kind of tied with what they give us. Yeah, we took a chicken that was picked up at the junction, no, not sure where it came from. But mostly it's dogs and cats, majority dogs, I would say, probably, over half is dogs.
So Brad, on this, um, school resource offer, officer, how long a contract will this be with the school? And is this the public and private, or just the public?
This one's just the public school. So they came to us, uh, earlier this, late this fall, I would say, we discussed it. And then I went to the Kemper-Carroll School System also to ask them if they're interested in something, because one officer would not be able to cover all the buildings within the district as far as Kemper and Carroll. And at that point, they didn't think they had the need based off the cost for it at this time. So it is something we'd review in the future if they brought to us. So it's currently just the public school system, and I, I see the majority of the time being at the middle school and the high school. Uh, but anyway, the twenty-eight E is currently written up for, it's one year in auto-renewing unless canceled by the other party. Um, I know that Kemper, or, excuse me, Carroll has gotten a grant to cover some of the cost. Um, and when I've talked to other schools that have, in our, within our conferences, kind of what we looked at, uh, most of those schools have had them for many years, almost ten years or some ten-plus. So they find great benefit with it, and the schools keep finding ways to fund it.
You know, they are all at sixty-forties?
They're kind of all over the board. I got, there's a little bit of everywhere. Some play just a fat, flat fee, some are paying hourly wages plus overtime, um, some are at the seventy-thirty like we're at. So they're kind of all over the board.
Seventy-thirty?
Yep, seventy-thirty is the one that we proposed to the school.
Uh, Brad, I was, I was looking up some that are hiring people now, they've never had one. Algonah Atlantic, Perry's had one for years, and they're all seventy, uh, seventy-five, twenty-five. And, um, but, so, but that's negotiable, right?
Yeah, it is.
Uh, but what I was wondering is, what will the officer be doing when school is out?
When they're out, when, so the summertime hours and over Christmas break and those types of stuff, we're going to, uh, put them onto our patrol shift.
Okay, okay.
So we'll backfill them, they're, they're going to fill vacations requests, they'll, uh, fill those gaps in the schedule, or they're going to be assigned to a, a shift and just cover a patrol shift for us over those summer months.
Okay, I, well, I was wondering about the breakdown, because too, I looked at some, um, like Sioux Center has, they hired someone, but they still had their job description and app online. And they're, and a few others I read, they're all over the place. People kind of define what they want, they, to custom tailor it. And I noticed, and then I even listened to the radio, the superintendent in Algonah was on the radio about theirs, and he said that they are tailoring theirs, that they do not see their officer as there to prevent an event, but rather to help with a rapid response, because they will depend on the police and others. And I just wonder, is, because I was thinking about liability, I'll keep it short, but I was just thinking, um, is that how Casey sees it in the board, like in the twenty-eight E? It's, it's not to prevent, I, I don't know how you can stop some things, yeah.
I hope it prevents too, but another thing is that the benefit of it will be that we'll be able to have a, I would say, better connection that the officers have with the students. And I'm hearing that from the other schools that we talked to too. And I was talking to an SRO yesterday, and he said that he has to remind the students that he is still a police officer, because the information they're telling them is something he should be able, be arresting them for, because they were too comfortable with them, almost it felt like.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's probably a good benefit that we'll see from it. Uh, but we hope it does prevent too, you know, just having an officer in the school, we think is a preventative measure that helps. But they'll be there to respond to any, uh, criminal violations, to assist, uh, the staff with any, um, kind of school issues that are going on too, that become heated or violent, or whatever it could be too.
Okay, uh, well, were you thinking that when you proposed the seventy-thirty, that that was based on the allocation of time, like seventy percent dealing with the schools, thirty percent, you know, when school is out or whatever?
Yes, and we initially had proposed, it, they also would be covering equipment costs, training costs, and that stuff too, because it's going to benefit them.
Right.
The school asked if we would take that out, so it was written without the equipment costs, the training costs into it. But seventy percent of the time would be at the school, maybe even a little bit more. Uh, we don't, I haven't had any discussion with them, it's how they want to cover, um, basketball games or football games, or whatever, you know, extracurricular activities, that hasn't been brought up to this point yet. So right now, the seventy-thirty is what's been proposed, and I guess I haven't heard anything back from them, negative or positive.
If we go to eighty-twenty, and then, you know, that works, right?
Yeah, we can always, we can always bring it up and offer it to them, and that's just a negotiating point, so.
Seventy-five, no, twenty-five.
I'm a little bit confused around this, the seventy-thirty is just during the school year? Or is it seventy percent the, I don't quite understand, is it based off of?
Uh, seventy percent for the total cost for the officer for our, for the budget year, for the entire year.
So the summertime, he's all with us, and that's part of that third.
That's what we're thinking, the thirty percent is our fee for that one, and the seventy percent of the school. Uh, seventy percent of the year, school year, so.
Covering the cost during school season, a hundred percent.
Correct.
Okay.
Pretty close, I don't know what that breakdown would be exactly, but it's got to be pretty close to that.
Yeah.
Uh, Brad, are you, uh, when I look, oh, I'm sorry. No, no, I'm sorry, I didn't, whatever.
I was under the assumption it was seventy-thirty for during the school time, too.
No, yeah, this one would be for the entire budget year.
Yeah.
That, that cost would be then.
Okay, do they have to go through the academy?
So I will have to put someone either through the academy, unless we get a certified officer, but the school resource officer will have to be someone who's, uh, within our department. I would, I don't feel comfortable sending someone to the school that's right out of the academy. It's just, there's, well, too much training that they wouldn't get their access to, and probably more job experience. So we'll, we'll send someone that's already within our department. And I can't, I remember right, I think the SRO twenty-eight E was written up, that the, uh, officer that was selected had to have one year of experience within our department. So we want to have someone that's got some experience, um, and it'll have to be a patrol officer level, so not a sergeant or above level, it's got to be a patrol officer level.
You mentioned covering events, and that's in that letter Casey gave us a long time, uh, November nineteenth, twenty-four. So he's covered a lot of the responsibilities, and I, I guess we'll see the twenty-eight E, but are you, are, are you giving a lot of input into what you want your officer?
So we'll still control the schedule, and that's, I'm going to pull the twenty-eight E up. So that's written, so that we have control over the schedule, and then any extra requests will have to come through us as far as if they want someone at the school. And then we'll have to decide at that point, do we want to, uh, pay overtime? And then who's responsible for the coverage of that? Or do we want to make an adjustment to the, um, schedule where, you know, we, we switch their eight-hour shift from, let's say it's a seven to three shift, we move it back so they can cover a late-night basketball or football activity, or whatever event they would want them to go to. So that's something that we really got to, want to figure out when we get to the point where we're going to be signing these twenty-eight E's. So, uh, right now, it's kind of an unknown, but if they do want that, the initial thought was, you know, adjust the schedule, because I'm sure they don't want to have to pay overtime fees.
Right.
And it gets pretty expensive on their side if they're fine with not having someone in the school during those times. You know, if it's a, there's no one there for start of class, because they got to be at an activity later in the night. And, uh, split schedules just don't work well, so that would be tough to do that.
Sure, sure, oh, thanks a lot.
So they don't expect someone there every minute of the day that they're?
Well, no, and even, you know, so we, it's one officer, and we have four school buildings. So, um, the elementary school, they're probably going to see an officer very little, just because there's not the issues at the elementary schools that would need to be taken care of by an officer. So the middle school and the high school is going to be the primary locations for them. But they're going to be splitting time between all four, so yeah, you're not, you know, you're not going to be at each school the entire school day, every day.
Brad, how many calls do you get to the, the high school and middle school right now for, for problems or issues?
This is going to be a rough estimate, but I would say probably four a week.
So, you know, you hear some stuff in the public that, you know, there's maybe some behavior things going on out there, which I think this would maybe help.
That's, yeah, and I think that's what Casey's looking at it too, is that, and they've had some staffing issues up there too, and you know, I, I don't know what the whole rules are for teachers as far as discipline and what they can and can't do. I mean, when I was in high school, the teacher had no problem putting you against the locker if you're causing a problem, but I think that's a thing of the past. So, uh, having a law enforcement presence up there will definitely make a difference.
Um, for some reason, say that this does not work out, and they want to cancel this in a year, what would be, what would be your plan?
Depends on what we have for attrition. If I have someone that's looking to retire, then hopefully we just be able to ride it out, but we could have to lay some, we could have to lay someone off.
Okay.
Are you going to keep somebody in there consistently over the years, or is this going to be kind of like a?
Hopefully not a rotation.
Listening like, oh, I hope it's not me, you know?
Uh, there's been, so we've kind of talked about it a little bit at our department meetings, and there was some interest from officers to do this. They just, that's, they like this part of the job. And so, uh, we'd like to have someone that's there long-term, I want to see, you know, want to see the same officer in the school year after year, to build those relationships and have that knowledge. Because first, we have to go to, so there's a lot of classes, a lot of training to get up to date on what they have to do. Because it's different than just a street cop, where, you know, we don't, you don't need to know all the, uh, price, you know, some of the school codes and things like that, that we need to have. So I want to have someone that's going to do it and hopefully be there for years to come.
Who's, who's paying the expense of that extra training?
So right now, the way the twenty-eight E, that was initially brought to the school, and they asked if we would remove that, so that would be on us. But some of it will be beneficial too, we're going to send the, we want to send the officer to, um, an active shooter instructor school, which we have some active shooter guys in our, on our department now, but it doesn't hurt to have more. Um, and they can do training and stuff for us over the summertime with that, and then also train within the school. And then, so there's some, there's some benefits to us for these classes. Now, the school resource officer class, probably not a ton of benefit as a patrol officer, but we'll, you know, we can eat the cost for that, or not huge expenses. Most of it will be, um, travel, housing, whether at, at a class for a week or two weeks, however long they are.
Have you gone through that training?
I have not, no, but once we get to the point, we're going to, uh, probably going to send the captain or the supervisor, uh, for the field training officer, or for the school resource officers, to the school, so they're also aware of what.
I meant for the active shooter.
I have been, yes.
Okay.
So yeah, I mean, I think there's some things that they're removing, so it should be, I mean, if you go in with an eighty-twenty request and it ends up at, you know, seventy-five, twenty-five, and we're ensuing all the cost of the training and stuff like that, you know?
That's, yeah, and that'll be.
It's an unfair request, even if it's in Atlantic or one of these other places.
I thought it was based off of the time that they're working for, it's not so much.
It is, that's, that's where I've kind of got the, the cost amount there. And like I said, I'm going to pull up, I have a document here with all the school splits, but it's, it really is all over the board for, so I looked at, I contacted all the Raccoon River schools, just because that's the Carroll Conference, to see what their costs were. And, um, they're all kind of over the board. Ballard, seventy-five, twenty-five, Winterset, sixty, forty, Carlisle, seventy, thirty, Bondurant, seventy, thirty, for the nine months that the school is in session. ADM is forty-nine percent school, fifty-one percent city. Uh, North Polk plays a fat, flat rate of fifty thousand per year to Polk County, and Boone plays, pays a fat rate of fifty thousand per year. So they're, they're really all over the board. And the Boone, uh, chief told me that the reason that that's happened is they have, they've had a school resource officer for about twenty years. Uh, the Boone School District had a financial issue, and they cut the program. And to get it back in, when they started negotiating, they said about five years after it was cut, the school would only agree to fifty thousand. And the, the police department saw such a benefit of it that they just thought it would be worth, worth the cost. So it is kind of all over the board. And most of them are covered by police departments, but Bondurant and North Polk don't have police departments at their town, so the Sheriff's Department in that county covers it.
Brad, say the Catholic school comes forward and wants to add a, a resource officer, would you use the same, same officer, or would there be?
We'd have to add, you'd have to add another officer. It's just, it's too much, too, too much space, I guess, or, you know, if you're, if we had to go, Carroll's got four buildings, Kemper's got three buildings, so just getting from place to place, I don't know if you'd even be able to cover every place enough in the daytime to justify the expense.
Yep.
You got the egg building too.
Yeah, so yeah, you add one more on top of it. And then if you have activities going on, it's just, it'd be, it'd be too much for one officer to be able to cover all those locations.
Yep.
So we'd have to look at adding another, another spot.
Right, currently you have a dare officer that goes from school to school, what will you do with that program?
The dare officer is talking about retirement, and it's one of those where we're probably going to have to, uh, probably look at cutting it, just because I don't have anybody that's going to backfill that spot. Now, for the Carroll School, and we still do, we still do, we still do walkthroughs, and we're at all the schools now as it is, even if we didn't have the dare program, we would still be there. Um, and it'll kind of be up to the schools if they want to try to have something in place, and we're going to have to work with them to get it figured out. But as of right now, I don't have anybody that is interested in backfilling the dare program. It's, uh, it's quite the job. The officer right now, I think, is in the school at least two days a week, maybe three. I think he does a short class on a third day, so, and it's, we do one semester at the, um, community schools and one semester at Kemper. So then at those times, they're in the school about two to three days a week. So it's, it's quite the task to do that.
So in the past, you've, you've given, um, I guess you've gone to Kemper and done like regular foot patrols and just general security at those places, um, that will continue?
That will, yep, that will continue. I did talk to the, the president there too, and he had asked that also, but we have no plans of changing that. And I got, um, you know, some of our officers have kids within each school, and so they, they like kind of walk into the schools and see what's going on, and we'll continue doing that too. And we make, we make our presence at basketball games and wrestling and whatever events are going on, we're trying to get to all of them, so. Wrestling moms kind of get a little rowdy, so.
There was an incident up in South Polk, I believe it was, right?
That was at, at Ankeny, I think.
At Ankeny, right?
Any other questions on that, or can we move on to the next part?
Yeah, let me go one more question.
Sure.
You said back when you, uh, when I asked you about what you had to cut out, you said something about cutting out ammo and like training supplies for, for that?
Yes. So I took three thousand out of that line item. Uh, we have quite a bit of ammo now, actually, we, uh, we had ordered some ammo about three years ago, it was taking some time to get to us, and it just showed up, and we kind of forgot we ordered it.
So we have enough to like?
Yeah, we have a pretty good amount now, and then, uh, we'll, we'll still, they'll still keep us with six thousand dollars in that budget line item, so there is some cost there that we'll have to be able to fill for things that we still need. So I feel comfortable taking that out and still being able to get by with what we needed to do for the training, uh, training supply.
The police rifles that you have in the cars?
What's that?
What caliber are those?
Two-twenty-three. And we have, and we'll keep them the same caliber, everything will stay the same. Nothing else for that one? Uh, on the next page, page forty, it has the top, uh, graph is for our communications, um, payment that we make, and that is on tab F, page ninety-four for the full budget. Uh, we are at a contract of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we paid to the county. That's been in effect for, I believe, three years now on a five-year contract, auto-renewing. Uh, they're, so far, it seems to be working pretty well, so we'll continue with that. So no change on that expense line item. Uh, disaster services, which is going to be on tab F, page ninety-five, that is our weather siren, so that pays for electrical, which is a pretty good chunk of it. And then I also have two thousand dollars in there for annual maintenance, which is typically battery replacement. So we don't usually have a lot of problems with them, and that's what that line item is for, that's what those, uh, that tab is for. The police forfeiture account is on tab S, page two-ten, and this is, um, any money that's forfeited over to us, or if it's from a case, and then we can't find the owners, the money gets stuck, uh, put into the police forfeiture line item. Uh, we have a few expenses that come out of there. Next year, I believe the only expense is, part of it is going to play for, um, let me pull up, make sure I got the right, want to make sure it's not.
Aren't we buying, uh?
The plates, we have plate, some, um, additional, uh, plates for the body armor that we're going to purchase. I can't remember if it's from that one or for some crime prevention, but I think it's from the forfeiture account. So I'll double-check that. Is it the forfeiture account, yep. So I have, uh, twenty-eight hundred dollars in there, that'll be covering some, um, ballistic plates that are used for the officers, that we need a, uh, additional plus a couple of replacements in there. So it's the, we all currently wear these soft plates, but we also have some ceramic plates that we throw to guys for when we, if we get called to, um, a high-threat situation, active shooter, barricaded subject type of thing, so they can throw them inside their vests and have them. And most of the guys have them, and we have some in the cars, but we have a few that don't have them currently, so we need to get them outfitted to that, to those items. So that's what that is, uh, for the police forfeiture account. And then crime prevention is on tab S, page two-twelve. And any revenue that comes from this, we do vehicle inspections, and the money that comes from the vehicle inspections is put into this account. The, everything stays pretty much the same, and I have no capital outlay coming out of that one. In the past, we've used that to cover some of the equipment costs. We paid, uh, recently, last budget year, this current budget year, I guess, some of the money covering the Motorola camera system update was part of the police, uh, crime prevention account, also police forfeiture too. So it's kind of a fund that we use to cover any expenses that, um, we need for equipment or any updating that we need to do for that type of, uh, activity.
Do all our officers have those Motorola cameras now?
We do, uh, all, so we have, each vehicle is outfitted with a Motorola camera. And then the body cameras, I have one on here. We have twelve of those and we have a docking station that officers have access to. So we don't assign one to every officer. When you get to your shift on your day, you go into a, um, the, uh, the website and you, you assign yourself to a camera and you grab that camera.
Just think of liability.
There, 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 you know, when we first got body cameras, it was probably like two thousand eight, two thousand nine. It was one of those unknowns, like, oh man, what's everybody watching? But now you can't go without it because it, it, you know, protects you for criminal cases. It also protects on false claims against officers or if an officer is causing issues too. So, um, it's, it's, it's been a tool that I don't think we could probably live without anymore. I think, uh, prosecution even expects that you have it. And so defense, the defense does too. So it's one of those things where you got, at this point, it's just a, it's a staple that you're never going to be able to get rid of. Uh, on page forty-one of the budget summaries is authorized personnel. You'll see the increase to seventeen point three-five and that's the ad, the additional for the, uh, school resource officer. Um, so I have, so I have the ten patrol officers, three sergeants, the captain, myself. Um, I have an administrative assistant and then we have a part-time officer who works, uh, seems to be less and less, but we still keep him on our, on our payroll because he does fill in the gaps and it's, it's a great asset that we have for us. Our capital for next year, we'll be have the auto, uh, the car replacement. That's out of the general fund. I have the computer software updates and replacement, which we have every year, just an additional thousand dollars in that, also out of the general fund. And then the police equipment patrol rifles, twenty thousand are the general fund. I don't have on there the ballistic panels. That'll come out of the police, police forfeiture account for twenty-eight hundred. That's my budget in a nutshell.
Appreciate you.
Any questions from anyone? Yep, it'll be fine. We'll do good. Thank you.
Go to Wendy? Okay, Wendy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I don't normally talk to the city council all that much. So while we're doing budget stuff, I also am presenting my annual survey. And I am presenting the five-year plan that we came up with for the library. Um, the five-year plan is part of our accreditation cycle. We have to get accredited every three years through the state. Um, you're required to have a five-year plan as part of that. So if you can, if you do a five-year plan, so if we do the five-year, year plan this year, it will cover actually two accreditation cycles. So we don't have to do it every three years. Um, this one is actually, we started from scratch. This is a brand new plan. We used data from the state data center and then we also had our state consultant come help us and do some surveys with some people from, um, we did one with the library board and the foundation together. And then we did one where she talked to some community members and asked them questions about what they like about Carroll. What are some changes they've seen about Carroll? What are some things that they would like to have in the town that they don't have right now? And some things that they felt like the library could help with those things. So it, it's kind of an ambitious plan. A lot of the libraries don't, don't include these many changes. We wanted to be a little bit ambitious and say some things that we wanted to, to change for the library. A lot of those things are internal changes or programs that we would like to offer. Some of them are offering different book displays or promoting things that we already have at the library, but promoting them in a different way. So that's just some light reading for you if you, if you so choose to look that over. Um, for our annual survey, this is something that I put together every year. I present this to the, to my library board usually in August. And then when I'm able to get the information for our comparison cities, then I present it to them again with the comparison to other cities. So, um, as librarians, we keep track of a lot of data and a lot of it, it's, it's just because it's easy to compare. So the number of people that walk into the library every year, that's something that we keep track of. Um, the circulation for actual physical books, DVDs, things like that, we keep track of that. The number of programs, the number of attendance at those programs. So this is just kind of a summary of all those things. And then how we compare from fiscal year twenty twenty through fiscal year twenty twenty-four. So compared to last year, the things that increased were the amount of money saved by library patrons, downloadable library material use, database use, total use of all library materials, the number of in-person programs, the number of people visiting the library this year, items borrowed from other Iowa libraries, wifi use and public computer use. There were small decreases seen in the number of physical items checked out. That was because we combined our, our, uh, seasons of TV shows together. So before, if you checked out Game of Thrones and there were five discs, it was five checkouts. Now it's one checkout so that they're together. We for some reason like to lose disc number three so that we would have to buy the whole season anyways. So it was a little wasteful and it was easier for people to check out the whole season rather than checking out disc one and two and waiting for disc three to come back in from somebody else. So actually we were, we were anticipating a bigger decrease there. Uh, a small decrease in the, the attendance at in-person programs and the number of items loaned to other Iowa libraries. Something that I added this year was the rural population physical checkout. That was something that the green county supervisors like to see. So I thought that maybe the Carroll County supervisors would also like to see it. Um, right now circulation of just physical items, so we're talking books, DVDs, puzzles, things like that, that you come into the library to pick up, not including any database usage or downloadable, um, is sixty-six percent from citizens from Carroll, twelve percent from people in rural Carroll County. If you include the rest of Carroll County, it's twenty-four percent.
I mean, what do you attribute to? It looks like our programs went up, but our attendance went down.
So some of those were just, we, we have, we offer a lot of different programs. Some of those programs, we don't have very good attendance at. Um, we also changed the number of summer reading programs this summer. So instead of offering it two programs on the same day for a presenter, we went to one program the same day. And so we did see a small decrease in attendance because of that.
And then this in-person programs, these are the amount of programs that we use, right?
Yes, those are the amount of programs that we offer at the library. Yeah, and some of them, some of them, it, it is kind of cycles. So like the number of people that you have at a storytime program, they, those kids kind of age out. So then sometimes you don't have as many new families with small kids that are aging into the program, things like that. Um, we have some programs that are primarily for the elderly. And sometimes they, they go into a nursing home or something like that. So then they are not coming, something like that. So it fluctuates a lot, but we're working at it. So those are, those are our numbers that we, that I, like I said, I present those to the library board. And, um, I just thought you guys would like to see those as well. As far as the budget, so my budget is on tab E, page forty-nine. And then if you want to see the full budget, it's tab I, page one-fourteen to one-fifteen. The biggest increase that we have this year is, just like everybody else that's in personnel services, um, we have a relatively new department. So we don't have very many people that are at the one-hundred percent of their, of their pay scale yet. I think we only have one. Everybody else is still on their step up. So we have the step up for them and the, the cost of living increase. Um, something that we were, that I was very excited about, we did have to update a lot of the computers at the library because they were not able to update to Windows eleven. And, um, unlike some of the other departments, we actually invite people to come onto our network. We're like, no, come to the library and use our computers or come to the library and use our wifi. So we have to make sure that those are as secure as we can, we can get them. And we were actually able to replace the rest of our computers that needed replacing in this year's fiscal budget. So we didn't have to increase that for next year. Our initiatives in capital outlay for twenty twenty-six are to upgrade the two printers that we have. They're about six years old. Uh, and this is actually the same price that they gave us five years ago when we updated printers. So that was a nice surprise. Uh, under revenue, we get revenue from the state. That one is based on the number of books that we loaned to people outside of Carroll and Carroll County. Uh, we get revenue from the county. That actually went down in twenty twenty-five. It doesn't look like it because there was a mistake in how they paid us. So it actually went down to forty thousand dollars last year. But because of the mistake in how they paid it, they ended up having to, to give us the extra seven thousand this year. It just wasn't included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Um, then we have some from the township contracts. We contract with seven of the other towns in Carroll County for library services. And then miscellaneous revenues, that one is really just a guess on what donations come in and things like that.
Hey Wendy, how does the, um, county determine what they give you? Just their budget or? I mean, it's all over the map looking at one-fourteen. Then you just told us that increase among county patrons, nine point seven percent. So.
I'm actually not sure.
Okay.
I, I, I'm actually not sure. We do present either, we either present as the Carroll County librarians, we either present our suggestion for an increase or we send them a letter. I mean, so it would be a lot.
So you make a request?
We do make a request, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So last year they did cut the funding to the Carroll County Library, four thousand dollars. They did not cut the funding to the other Carroll County libraries. It was just the Carroll library.
That's interesting. Thank you.
Then on the next page, we do not have any change for authorized personnel. Um, we actually are having the adult services librarian starts next week on Monday. So we're very excited about that. And then we will be fully staffed again. And for next year, our capital item is the updates for the printers. We, we would be buying two new printers.
You should have handed this nice pretty thing and printed out and said you're going to get a new printer.
Yeah. So do you have any questions on the budget?
Wendy, how many other libraries are in the county? And I, I know Coon Rapids has one.
Coon Rapids, Glidden and Manning.
Okay. And the county contributes to them as well?
Yes, yes.
Do you have an idea how much that they get?
So bef, not including last year, the year before that. Um, so Carroll got forty-four thousand and then the other three libraries together got forty-four thousand.
And they present, do they present as a, as a group?
Yeah, we presented as a group last year.
All four of you did?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we get the longest share of that pot?
Yes.
Or fifty percent?
Do we provide, we provide more services than the other three, correct?
Yes.
Are we a full ser, we're a first, we're, we would be considered a full-service library as opposed to the other three. They are, what would you call it? How do, how would you classify that?
So I, I know the other libraries are probably not open as many hours as we are and they obviously don't have the staff that we have. So, I mean, they're just from smaller, they're just, they're just smaller libraries.
Are there things that we provide that they don't provide? And just say why.
You know, I, I would not, I'm not quite sure on that. I'm not quite sure. It just, a, a lot of the things that libraries offer, we offer, all libraries offer it. Um, and, and obviously the main things that you think of when you think of a library checking out books, checking out DVDs, checking out puzzles, we all offer those things. And we all offer computers and printers and things like that. I mean, I, some of them might not have like a three-D printer that we do, or we obviously offer a lot more programs than they do.
And with that decrease of you, I mean, are you comfortable with where you're still at? I seen that their allotment went lower, but you're still maintaining fifty percent these days. Do you feel comfortable at that level?
I would obviously like that level to increase, but, um, the way that, the way that I figure it, I don't figure, when I ask the, the city for a certain amount, that amount does not change. So if the, if the supervisors give us less, then I just have to not spend as much somewhere else in my budget. I don't feel like the Carroll County, um, money should replace city money. And I don't feel like the city should have to replace money if they decide to lower it either. So I feel like it kind of goes both ways. So if they gave me a raise this year and they gave me forty-four thousand instead of forty thousand, then I would feel like that extra four thousand isn't four thousand less that the city would fund me. It would just be four thousand dollars more I could spend somewhere else.
Are you not shutting the doors down?
No, definitely not.
Well, make sure, have to call them over there if you're shutting down the doors.
That would not be good. That would not be good. And then we also have, I also have on tab S, page two-oh-eight and two-oh-nine, which is the library trust fund budget. So this, this fund is where we put, if someone gives us money for a donation for the library, especially like a memorial, they say please buy a book for, like in memory of this person, that's where these donations go. We also put the direct state aid money in here because that has to be accounted for every penny, um, on, on a form to the state. So it's just easier to keep track of in here. So it's basically money in, money out for that. Um, this year we did increase the amount of money that we were requesting to spend from that fund. Uh, we increased the books, films and records line item, the programs line item and the miscellaneous supplies line item for this year. And that was the amount that we, so the amount that we took out of our budget from the services and commodities was nine thousand dollars. And then we put six thousand dollars into the library trust fund budget because we figured like we, we can definitely buy more, um, books, films, records. We can do more programs out of this budget as well. So do you have any questions? Thank you.
All right, that it?
That's it, thank you.
Let's move, uh, back to other areas which we were going to cover.
Do you have a work report?
No, we're breaking in at six-thirty.
Yeah.
Five minutes?
Absolutely. All right, so like five minutes.
Okay, um, we will, we'll pick up the other areas from Monday night that we did not cover. And so starting under tab E pages, we'll start on page forty eight, which is what we call our. Or the other, um, not other, sorry, that, Health and Social Services area. These, as you can see, these are all the outside agencies that have requested funding from the city. What is different this year than the past? The funding levels are at the same level as the current fiscal year twenty five, twenty six is the same. What is different is we're proposing to actually pay this local option sales tax instead of the general fund. As a way to try to get our general fund to balance.
Thought there being, most of these things are uh organizations that do provide a government service, but not necessarily. Uh, they're not a government entity and some citizens probably wouldn't necessarily want their property taxes going to some of these vice. Anywhere, so that way utilizing local option sales tax obviously keeps our property taxes lower. But it also utilizes and promotes our sales tax to help with these uh services.
So if there are no questions about that, the next section or the next area would be on page sixty one. Service, other retired citizens volunteer program is R S B P and then S G P is foster grandparent program.
That's why we need.
I actually started one.
Did you?
But I don't think I had that one on there, so I will add that and make a note. So then on page sixty one is the information relating to economic development. In particular, Carroll County Growth Partnership. The funding request here is a little bit of an increase as requested by C C G P. And again, this one is being proposed to be paid from local option sales tax instead of general fund like it is this year. The next little section is the housing. This is the funding that goes for the Housing Trust Fund that we can twelve administers. That's the same level as the current year. And then the last little section under this economic development, community economic development is for planning and zoning. It is when somebody needs to work with P and C and they need a subdivision, a minor subdivision. There's a slight fee, permit fee that they pay. And then we have a little bit of a cost to record information, so that's what those expenses would be. Any questions about the economic development? Otherwise moving on, on page sixty seven talks about hotel motel funds. And actually, um, inside your front cover of your budget book is the sheets for hotel motel and local option sales tax. So let's first focus on hotel motel that gives more information and balances. Um, it's a better breakdown than the summary here. Now a whole lot is being requested of hotel motel for fiscal twenty six. But the key items are to point out is the chamber tourism request is constant at thirty five thousand amount. Which was requested for fiscal twenty five, that's what was requested for fiscal twenty six as well. And then the other item on here to point out is, I know council had taken action a few months ago. About the marketing branding wayfinding project that um the chamber is kind of spearheaded. And council took action to actually pay for that out of local option sales tax. Staff has thought about that during this budget prep that we would think it'd be a better use of our hotel motel tax funds. And so we would request that in this budget presentation and update that we would actually use hotel motel tax funds for that instead.
And that was approved when we did those grants, correct, that money?
The, yes, that was all part of that downtown, yep, yep.
Yep. Um, so the funding that's in here at this point, it's pretty much a guess. We don't know how much it's gonna call, it's more of a placeholder to know that more is coming. As when Chamber was here the last time, they had said they need to do some work, they need to gather some more information and they will come back with a more concrete plan. And give us some more cost estimates. So by all means, this is not necessarily what they think it's gonna cost, that's just our biggest guess at this point.
It was a large swag.
Yeah.
As far as the fifty ex, the extra fifty thousand dollar, do I anticipate them spending it? I don't think so, I don't know. I think they'll spend more than the fifty that they've already got for wayfinding signs and that stuff. But I don't know if it'll, I doubt it'll, I would be surprised if it's the whole hundred thousand. Well, it was fifty for signs and then sixty two and some change for the contract with Ben Mulder. I, I'm sorry, it was twelve extra, twelve to fifteen thousand extra. What's that?
We get Ben for free if we.
No, he, he, we had a contract, well, the chamber contracted with, with him for that. No, we, we still have to pay for that, for his services.
Because part of us doing those grants, it was said that economic, uh, what's it, I forgot what it was.
Ben Mulder or Jim Thompson?
Jim Thomas stated that if we did the grants and that we would get the marketing guy.
No, he didn't say that was for free, he said that would be a discounted rate. I- ish, but yeah. So that's part of that sixty, well, it was actually sixty five thousand, but that's part of that sixty five thousand, so it'll be twelve thousand, so it'll be. There, there's an extra three that we actually budgeted because we're, we were planning on fifty thousand for signage and stuff like that. And then the fifteen would be for Ben Mulder and the marketing piece. But it's only twelve, so there's an extra three there.
So on that spreadsheet, it does show you the balance that's being projected. And I'm sure there'll be other projects that will come up in the future, you know, you can utilize hotel motel tax twenty four. But just to give you kind of an idea, we have been getting roughly, well, two hundred forty thousand of hotel motel tax every year is probably on the bright side. Um, we'll obviously keep on, we'll see how things progress if we need to update and increase our estimate there or not.
The actual twenty two to twenty three, quite a, quite a significant difference, got an idea?
No. Nope.
It, it.
Big local wedding or something?
It can go up and down and just depends on what, what happens.
No, it's quite a change. I didn't know if it would relate to state baseball, but we were doing it both years anyways.
Do we have a breakdown of that like per month, of when that comes in?
It actually, this fiscal year is the first year they started allocating that to the cities by month. Prior to that, we got it on a quarterly basis.
Do we have the quarterly?
No, no, you don't, you just see the annual amounts right now.
That's something you can get, obviously, just, I mean, obviously.
So how many years worth would you like?
Forty five.
Good. I can get you that information?
Another kind of gives a judge on like, what state baseball is bringing in and what, you know what I mean? If you see what events are, you know, instead of just.
You know, like when we had Rad Bride a couple of years ago, everybody was thinking that there was a, would be a hu- that next month, that next. Local option sales tax payment was not a huge increase.
Yeah, but that's what we.
So it's just one of those things that, it's, it's kind of hard to guess, but I mean, it might have come in later. I, I don't know how.
That was just one night too.
Yeah, but I mean, but there's a lot of people there, but state baseball is all week. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Right, and the other things that's.
The number should show that it, there's an increase in this, I mean, I'm trying to give them a plug of like, hey, we can trace it. That this event is bringing in, you know, maybe the court classic, it might be one that is creating a drive to hotel motel. Or maybe it's not.
Chad, is that junior college gonna draw a lot of people for in hotels?
Not, not fans.
Okay.
But each team, coaches, a lot of the parents will be staying in Carroll for no less than three nights.
Okay.
Yeah, that should reflect, you know what I mean, if we're.
You, you might see it, I mean, you, it's, it's a gen- that. You theoretically, you should see an increase for those. I, I would, I would caution that you might, there, there might not be a real observable thing.
What I wanna see is, cause then I want to caution people when they say we need to do these things because it's an economic boost. If there's no reflection, then, you know what I mean, that's, we, I mean, if there's no reflection, then there isn't an economic boost.
How are you gonna break that down, looking at a tax base? I mean, the money that.
But you still have the people in town, they're spending money now.
Local option sales tax should go up for hotel motel. There should be, we run an event and, and we put money into something and we run that event. There should be a, you, i- if it's successful for what it is, and this is an economic driver is what we call it. That economic driver equals tax revenue.
Yes, I would, theoretically, yes, you are correct. However, I would say in practicality, it doesn't always show up.
Well, if it doesn't show up, then it isn't an economic driver.
Maybe.
Do we know how, but the line is for that?
When, when the state controls that, I.
Yeah.
It's one of those things, I don't, like I said.
I was, I think I can figure out like the quarterly ones.
It'd be kind of interesting because I know in other things related to, to my job, sometimes the state decides. We're not paying this until after the first, you know, they, so they, you wouldn't necessarily know what day the uh. State baseball revenue came in, for example, if, I mean, if it's, if they're true with that.
I'm not doing specific days. What I'm saying is that we see, we do these things, there should be an increase, economic increase through tax revenue. Either hotel motel or local option sales tax throughout the year from doing these things, if we know that we're doing it.
And if you, and if you do go back and look over the last few years, we have had an increase in local option sales tax over the year. Now, I'm just, I'm just telling you that looking at, okay, in July, when we have the state baseball tournament. I, the state chooses when they give it to us, so it's awful hard to say there's the state baseball income. That's, that's what I'm trying to get across to you.
Assuming that I'm looking at this as a negative thing.
No, I'm, I'm just trying, I'm trying, I'm just trying to explain to you that while in theory what you're trying to do is correct. But it doesn't work, it, in practice, it doesn't usually show that way, that's what I'm trying to say.
Did you say it's by the month or by the quarter?
It's now by the month.
Now, this fiscal year twenty five is the first year it's by the month, prior to that it was by the quarter.
But you don't know which month they pay.
I would find out, I'm almost positive, if you close out a month, then the businesses have to report the next month and then we would get it.
Well, sales tax is reported, I know that is.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm pretty certain, but I would want to double check with the, the people who know for sure that it's, yeah, you close out a month.
You close out a month and they want the money by the end of the next month.
And then you would probably get it the following, I think, but I'm not sure if there's some lag in the reporting and the remittance to the city.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, again, theoretically.
After you pay, I'm not sure, so I gotta double check that. If the state's behind by another month or if it's, you do get that, that following month.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, so I'll, I'll do some checking on that, yeah. Okay, are there other questions about the hotel motel? If not, the next page is page sixty eight in our summary. Which is the electric franchise fee fund. We've been generating about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars a year for the electric franchise. And it's primarily been put towards street related projects. As you can see, nothing was estimated in fiscal twenty five, but in twenty six, we are planning to put a hundred thousand towards a twelfth street reconstruction project. And at this point going forward, that's, the plan is to be using the electric franchise fee for street related projects. The next page after that is our federal fund special revenue. This actually, this fund will actually close out at the end of fiscal twenty five with the transfer, the last set of monies for. Um, this was as a reminder for the American Rescue Plan or the ARPA funds. And we are planning on using the remainder balance to go towards the wastewater digester and V L R project.
So I have a question on that to council, I was thinking when we got home, we obviously have the increase for the northwest water pressure. And we have this one point two million dollars here. Would it be or nine hundred and seventy?
Yeah, there's nine hundred and sixty four thousand dollars left of ARPA funds.
And obviously, we're looking at a ten percent increase on our water bill, we have this money, why don't we put it to that? So that way, we can drive down that ten percent and we're putting more money into our institution pocket.
Randy, what would that be?
What would that do?
We can determine what that would do.
I'm not, the, the one thing, the one thing I would caution is, is if we, I, I would, I would recommend sp- spending it on some sort of economic development growth. Whereas that will be something that will continue to grow or we can continue to get it back and reinvest it. Whereas if we spend it on something like property tax relief or on our water system, once we spend it, it's gone. But that's, that's not my decision, that's up to you as a council.
I feel like we find it hard to even track our economics. Like, you know what I mean? What I can tell you is that our constituents are out there trying to go grocery shopping, and more money in their pockets ultimately going to help them. And so just, I mean, kind of food for thought, and I, I agree with what you're saying, I just, you know, I, I look at it a different way, so. We're coming up on an election year too, so I mean, if we, anything that we can do for, you know, to, to help our constituents, I think, you know, people at this table, I mean, should probably help them.
I think it's pretty evident that our, that our expenses are never going to go down if we don't grow though either. I mean, the water, I mean, if you don't, as much as I don't want to see a water bill increase, I mean, we didn't have, like Randy said, we didn't really have. Time to plan for it to where we wouldn't see that large of an increase. That, or, you know, we, you know, how long is that study good for?
The, what, the rate study or the?
The, uh, pressure study that.
Oh, it's, it would be good whenever you, you build it. Uh, you know, the pressure is not going to change any time at all. Um, and it, this is just an addition of a zone, so it would be good for the long term.
I mean, is this something we look at? Building a fund up to where it isn't such a large increase, you know?
If that could be done, uh, this study and actually the plan has developed to, to date would be, uh, current. I mean, it would be usable. At, at any time in the near future.
You know, I've sat up here for a year here, I've heard how this ARPA money is just free money. Right? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
What's got our constituents going to cut of this free money? That, that's all, that's all that I'm saying. What's on our constituents going to cut of this free money, right? That, if we can drive that water cost ultimately down, I think it's kind of a no-brainer to me, but I mean, that's a decision that you guys ultimately have to make.
Well, uh, another thing to think about, um, referring back to Aaron's memo, and people do campaign on this. I know this was a big thing when Mark Beardmore ran. And he said, if you don't build your tax base, you're going to have to raise, uh, taxes, and building your tax base means making economic development investments. And as our top priorities indicate, in land for housing, land for commercial, that benefits people for generations when you build your tax base, so. That's, that's something to think about too, and another thing that I find very tenuous and worries me in the long run is what the state is going to do. As far as, uh, again, limiting our ability to grow, which small towns like Carroll have a hard time doing. And so I, I really think, thinking long-term is always good, and growing our tax base has, at some point, has to become. A commitment so that we grow our housing, grow our commercial, et cetera, or we're going to have to raise car fee taxes. Nobody wants to live where their property taxes are getting higher and higher.
So I'm not anti-growth. I don't know if we grow when eggs are eight dollars and ninety-nine cents, but that's, you know what I mean, like that, that, like. I'm not anti-grow, but I mean, there, there's a time to grow, and then there's also a time that we can help our constituents out, and you see it a different way than I see it, and I mean, that's completely fine.
But there's always going to be something though, Jason, I mean, whether it be eggs or meat, whatever it is, there's always going to be something that we run into on that side of it. I mean, when I look at. Just a wage increase of three hundred and sixty-some thousand and our taxable value goes up sixty-six, well, we're a three hundred thousand dollar deficit there just on increase of expenses on wages. You know, pretty soon, you know, hey, you're, you gotta cut, you know, cut this out, cut that out, you know?
Well, and people don't have to eat eggs, but they have to pay taxes. You know what I'm saying?
So, so let's, let's determine what that number is. Nine hundred and seventy thousand is what the ARPA you're looking at?
Nine sixty-four.
Okay, so five hundred thousand equals forty-some dollars for a hundred thousand, so you're looking at a hundred dollars one time for a hundred thousand dollar home.
On property taxes.
On property tax.
Now, on your, so on your, there's a lot more calculations if you were to say, all right, instead of using, we're borrowing how much money for the, out of the water sys- or I guess that's.
Three, three point seven three.
So what does that calculate to reducing your?
The nine, the nine sixty-four is about twenty-five percent of that number, the three point seven.
So for.
In general terms, twenty-five percent.
Because it's water, everybody gets a water bill, so you're even, you're paying it one way or the other, right?
Yeah, but if I get a ten percent increase, when I got this free money, that I can take that down, which puts that free money in their pocket.
So if, if I got a tax, if I got a property tax bill that's a hundred dollars less this year, on a hundred thousand dollar home, and it goes up two hundred bucks next year, I'm going to be pissed.
And so you think that this nine hundred thousand dollars is going to equal a hundred dollars less on the property tax?
Well, if you put it towards property tax relief, that, that would be the effect, it'd be a hundred, hundred dollar effect on the property tax. But, right.
Want to use it for property tax relief, so I'm trying to.
Right, so if, so what, so, so what we're looking at is if we use it towards buying down on the increase of the water rate. That would become a, well. We, it was a twenty-nine percent increase, and we figured out that it was, I'm going to say it's a three dollar increase on a normal home. And then it was a three dollar and thirty dollar increase the next year, so let's just use those two years, twenty-five percent of that is. A dollar and some change on your water rate.
Per month.
Per month. So, so we're talking about a dollar on the water rate per month. So, which would be, again, then, then.
That's a guarantee.
Sure.
Yeah, like, that's a guarantee.
But then it's gone.
I've noticed when we.
But if you, but if you.
Very adverse in some things, but when it comes to relief to somebody, it's not like, then we're going to take a chance. I mean, I hear what you guys are saying, I just don't agree with you, you know, which is fine, like, that's why, you know?
Any more?
Um, we still, under the other section, we, on, yeah, under the other areas, we still have local option sales tax, but I know the food is here, and that'll take a little longer to discuss, so.
Okay, if we've got more there, let's, uh, go ahead and take a break and. Grab something to eat here. We'll be back maybe in fifteen minutes or so.
Okay.
All right?
The funding is being set aside in fiscal twenty six. But Aaron and I talked that we would actually probably in the second meeting in February, we'll be bringing something to council to get them kick, kind of get them kickstarted here. One of them is continuing with the downtown facade project. We have a hundred thousand allocated in our fiscal twenty six to do another round of what we had just done. In hopes that downtown businesses would want to take advantage of that. We would like to get that application process started here sooner than later, but obviously any funding would not be paid out until after July first. And then also the housing incentive. That was one of council's priorities that we would want to look at doing another round of ten houses at twenty thousand dollars each again. And would like to get that project or that program started again here at the end of February and the, like, meeting in February. And knowing that if council approves the project to start, if somebody comes in with a building permit and they get approved for it, but no funding would be paid out until after July. Typically, a house is not built in a few months, that it takes months and months longer than two or three months, we're talking, you know, six, eight months maybe.
Is there any carryover on those grants from like the initial?
Which, what are you talking about?
The, the initial facade grants, yeah, there are one, two, three, four of those that haven't been paid out yet. I know.
That total of what, is it, what was it originally, a hundred, it's over a hundred?
The, yeah, we did not spend all of it, the rest of it just went back in the local office sales tax balance.
And how much did we spend?
Hundred.
Seventeen thousand, eight seventy eight. That was what was approved on those first round of downtown facade.
How much did we originally put away for it, wasn't it?
Well, no, it was a hundred and fifty. But we took a hundred of that from what we thought was going to be a, uh, what did they call it? A demonstration grant, we, instead of doing one demonstration grant, which we're still working with Brown Shoe Fit for that. We, we had another one, or, or it was, might have been a, we were hoping that it might be some sort of catalyst grant too. And then that didn't go through, so then we took that extra hundred thousand and put that towards facade grants, which bumped up our facade grants up to twenty thousand dollars apiece. Or actually twenty five, twenty five. So, so we, I just kind of picked the number that we would do five twenty thousand dollar facade grants this year rather than more than that.
I thought it was like in the two hundreds, because we had to do emergency catalysts.
Well, we did do an emergency catalyst grant, yes.
That, that's not a part of this hundred fifteen, that's in addition.
Just on those grants.
Correct.
Yes.
So we're fifteen thousand dollars over what we originally had. What was the origi, what was the original?
Two fifty.
Two fifty?
Fit, and it was.
A hundred revert.
Fifty of it was gonna be, we were gonna do five ten thousand dollars facade grants.
So we still have a hundred grand left on what we originally committed?
Originally. No. No. Five, we were originally gonna do five facade grants at ten thousand apiece, so then we had a hundred thousand dollars, we had two demonstration grants that were gonna be at a hundred thousand, one was for Brown Shoe Fit and the other was gonna be, I believe it was gonna be.
It was, no, we did it, it was the catalyst grant for five oh four holdings.
But there was another one too, that was, uh, Chico's building that we thought might be an emergency catalyst or something that we were gonna try and help out with. And then that building went away. So then instead of using that, those hundred thousand dollars there, we use that and put that towards the facade money. The hundred thousand for the emergency catalyst was already budgeted outside of that two hundred and fifty.
What was the balance left, I guess, at the end of, of this grant, what was the balance left on what we originally committed to?
The hundred and fifteen minus a hundred and fifty, so about forty five thousand dollars. Thirty five, yes, sorry. No, if it doesn't get budgeted or planned, that just goes back into the balances and we're planning for ten twenty thousand dollar facade grants this next year. No, I'm sorry, five facade grants at two hundred, right? Five at twenty.
Five at twenty, unless you want to change that.
Five at twenty, unless you want to change that.
Yeah, right now we just have a hundred thousand.
So, so my question is, is Thomas Plaza, that was talked about in a meeting with Jim Thompson of a demonstrator grant of how that could be spruced up, what that could be done and look like. With that changing ownership to somebody local, are we preparing or thinking that we may have something come forward from that local ownership?
Kimberly and Jim Thompson are working with Debbie Durham right now that won't qualify for a catalyst grant. According to Jim Thompson, but there could be something else that he's working with De, with Debbie Durham on something else. So there might be a match grant asked for down the road. There's also a catalyst grant that, uh, the flower shop is.
It's a flower garden.
Flower garden. Is getting repurposed, so there is a application for a catalyst grant there also.
Of this hundred grand, like all these grants that come in, can they come out of this hundred grand or this sixty-six thousand? Does that make sense, or is this just specifically that and you still have to match these other?
Of that, of that hundred grand, that will be directly towards facade grants. So a catalyst grant is normally a hundred thousand dollar match, which we've done before in the, in the past.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of other brands out there, I got the catalyst.
Okay. I don't know what other.
The, the other, other grant out there and somebody gets a demonstration grant or whatever it may be. I don't know, but you guys, I'd rather have it come out of the original hundred thousand dollars that we have for grants.
Man, I think that downtown facade, you know, that got people to spend some money on some of their buildings and maybe would not have before. I mean, even all the way down to tuck pointing, like if they don't do that, then.
No, yeah, I get that, I just, I just don't want to, we should also be able to use a hundred grand to match it as well, you know what I mean? We can extend to it if there's more to it, but, like, I don't care how the individual business gets the money, like if they're doing some type of grant and we have to match it. I just don't want it to be, we have to match this grant and then we also have this grant, and you know what I mean, like, it's.
Well, it's hard to predict what's gonna come in.
You're saying you want it out of the general fund and put it back to the grant category?
Yeah, put it in the grant category.
But it's the same thing, if we come to that point where somebody needs more money, they're gonna come to us and say, can we have the grant? We're gonna say aye, and then it's done, so.
Well, and, and taking, again, spending money out of local office sales tax is a little bit easier than going into your general fund because you're, so it, it's just a little simpler that way. Now, do we want to?
I want to see a show.
I want to see my show.
The three hundred thousand from last year on streets rehab, that is North Adams or what? What was that spent on?
Three hundred thousand on street rehab from last year?
Oh, that is, sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just guessing it was Adams.
No, I believe that is actually the design services for 12th Street.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
So was that all spent?
It will be, if it currently has some.
It will be all spent.
It's underway right now.
Okay, and then so that's why it's carrying over with the two hundred thousand equal five hundred total on it, is that right?
No, this year, what, do you, two hundred thousand for, is that two hundred thousand for 12th Street also?
That's 12th Street. So the three hundred is also 12th Street.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, so are there other questions? Is there yes or a no, or you need to think more about wanting to continue with the downtown facade project at a hundred thousand?
Yeah, my personal feeling is if we have, I just want to be ready to, if somebody comes forward with one, we're ready to go with it and confide it, but.
Well, this, what, I guess what Aaron and I were thinking with this, this right here is the application process, like, you know, we did multiple businesses.
Yep.
Now, if there is somebody coming forward because they need a grant match for like a catalyst or demonstration, that is not being reflected in here right now. However, there is a balance being projected in this fund at the end of the year that if that opportunity came to us.
We could, we could do that, okay.
Yes, yes.
There's a.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Um, I just want to mention, it was our fourth highest priority when we had our planning session.
The facade?
The facade program, right, number four.
Yeah, the facade and the, uh, the housing grants were two of the five, and those are in there.
Right.
I have a question about the housing too, so how many did we use in the prior one? So what did, did we use them all?
We used all of them, there were twenty over three years?
Two or three years, they're not all paid out yet, but they're, they all have been approved and houses aren't being built right now.
So when the new ones coming up, can they start applying for them? Because I get a lot of people.
That's, that's what our proposal will be on the twenty fourth, wh, when we, or I, I guess that, we want to start having them apply so that, and as long as they know that you're not gonna get any money before the first, which Laura had said that, we know that you're not gonna be able to build a house in three months, so, yeah, we would like.
Yes, we will be asking council to.
If, if council's okay with that, that's what we are planning on doing. But that's a council, uh, motion or directive.
The banning, the abandoned property initiative of a hundred and fifty, what will that entail?
We had that conversation today. We don't know, it's a swag. Um, it, but it, but that's going towards the six fifty seven A process, that's going for, we're probably gonna try and keep the nuisance side of it in the, uh, in the general fund, but then when we go to, if we have to purchase a house after Dave does his magic or something to that effect, that's what those funds are.
Is this to tear it down, you're thi, is that what, tearing it down?
It could be, I would say that would be, that would probably be that umbrella as well, is, is the city ends up purchasing and then we have to demolish and tear it down, and that, that would be what those funds could be used for.
Okay.
But yeah, there, there's not a identified project, just like the down, not like the downtown facade right now, but we wanted to allocate some funds so that if this opportunity comes up, that we're not, you know, without any funding to be able to do something.
Yes.
If, if we got into the six fifty seven A, would that, would this possibly go for court costs too?
Uh, well, we're trying.
General fund or?
We're, we're trying to keep the court cost or the legal fees in the general fund at this point. So, could we do it out of that? Yes, we can, but ideally, we're still trying to figure the, how we want to set that process up the best.
Right.
And so at this point in time, we've decided we're gonna keep legal fees, stuff like that, in the general fund. Purchase, tear down, stuff like that, out of that.
That's great, thanks.
I need to digress for a minute, I know that we went over hotel motel, but what is cultural support?
That has to do with any upkeep or day-to-day operations of the theater at the rec center. So we get a little bit of revenue from the rental of it, but then we do have a little bit of expense that goes along with the lights, the heat. We do allocate a little bit of staff time to manage the rentals.
I see culture and I was looking around the room and I thought I was missing something.
So.
We bought curtains or something too, one evening.
If we have a small purchases, uh, replace lights, now, we do have in fiscal twenty five, which we've held for a number of years now, um, two hundred fifty thousand to go towards some theater upgrades. A recent conversation with Jack at the rec, he had mentioned they are gonna start moving on that and actually start doing some stuff with flooring and painting and some other items, so, yeah. To try to deal with this person up in there.
The seating in there is original, isn't it?
Yep. And that's what year?
Seventy seven.
Seventy seven, yeah.
Last time, this was several years ago, looked at getting just per seat, about five hundred dollars, four hundred to five hundred dollars per seat to replace, so.
We didn't have somebody in here that likes history.
But that color's starting to come back.
That works.
It is, it is.
We are gonna start doing some work on the stage, we're gonna redo the floor in there, and curtains were, was done about seven, eight years ago.
Right.
So the curtain's still alright, but?
They're okay, yeah, I, we replaced one, I believe, of four of them there, so. Speakers have been replaced, but they're still showing age, there's those things we need to do, it's time to look at improvements in there.
Jack, what about the lights, when Becky was doing, oh, good.
That'd be one of the next.
At one of her concerts, we were there and all the lights went out and they just kept going, so, they said, no problem. But they are in need of, okay.
Said she didn't tell us about that.
That was when the transmitter went out, or whatever, the fire, the.
Yeah, it was, oh, it wasn't, okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
And then the other item I would point out is under the section that we call in transport, we have traffic signals. We are proposing to do an interfund loan with the capital projects fund to, and local office sales tax to pay for the, the traffic signals. And then use TIF to reimburse the local office sales tax when the TIF money comes in, in a year or two.
Real quick on this downtown restroom, I know it's, uh, pretty minor, but, so this cleaning, is that, are we having our cleaning personnel do that, or is that a contract?
That's a contracted service at this point, yep. Yeah, so clean, that, that line item there is for both cleaning and, um, up to fifty dollars on the water bill. Is that, is that a, a year we're paying forty-two hundred on the, sorry, on the cleaning?
It would be hard, someone's doing enough to do it.
No, no, this is down in the mall.
If, that would include both the fifty dollars per month, up to fifty dollars per month for the water and the contracted cleaning services.
So, yeah, it would be an annual expense there rather than monthly.
Have we thought about giving that out to one of the local agents, like, um, there's a couple agencies that do that, kind of as an outing for their clients, have we thought about? We have not thought about, we can look into it, but we have not thought about that. It's just forty-two hundred, but, so. Are there other questions about the proposals for the local office sales tax and the different projects that are being proposed to, to be funded with this?
Is the region twelve contract, does it go up every year?
So that actually is our best way, so we are under contract with region twelve to put thirty thousand dollars into each home that they will try to flip, I'm gonna call it, so rehab. Um, and so for a total of three hundred thousand, how it breaks out each year is, I don't know, we, we're actually only paid out on one house right now.
Yes.
At this point, they're, so it's as they find the houses to be able to rehab, is when we would have to pay the thirty thousand dollars per house.
I haven't done anything, right?
They've done one, they've only been able to find one.
So this is, yeah, I showed over a two-year period, it actually might be something that's gonna take six, seven, I don't know how many years to actually fulfill that full three hundred thousand dollars. Alright, are there any other questions about local office sales tax? Okay, Aaron?
Should we go to Chad? Go to Chad.
I think that's all the sections under the other areas.
Okay. How about you, Chad?
Alright, we'll start it off in tab E, page fifty-one, you can follow along on your gen, or GLs on one seventeen. So, we're gonna start with parks and open spaces, you know, accomplishments, we did get a new contract through twenty-twenty-eight. Um, been working with Iowa High School Athletic Association on getting that contract before everybody, uh, should have it here in early March. Um, completed, or almost completed the Merchants Park Improvement Project. Uh, initiatives for this year, lighting project at Grand Park. Uh, tree planting, still trying to make up for over four hundred lost ash trees, uh, which I do have a little info on that, and then Northwest Park Shelter House. Once we get any more information, I emailed them again two weeks ago, they said they didn't have any more information, I emailed them again saying, you know, this is seven and a half months that it burnt down.
This is the insurance?
This is insurance.
Excuse me.
So, you know, we need to move forward, just, we need to get numbers back, we need to start planning because construction season, whether we rehab it, or as the council had talked about, doing something new, w- we need to move forward and actually get some numbers on replacement value, cash value of these structures.
What with the insurance company?
Without getting half the answer, I can.
You should talk to Chad.
Yeah, I'm emailing, emailing them about every other week right now, just asking for answers, and it, the last time they replied was middle of January, basically saying, they updated their system, so they weren't able to check on it because their system didn't allow them to look anywhere further past January first of twenty-twenty-five. Like, that really doesn't make any sense, but, thank you, and keep me posted. So, working on them, but it's very slow going.
The, the shelter have reservations in baseball, what is that breakdown like?
So that's mainly just.
Do you know how much in shelter have reservations, how much in baseball?
Uh, off the top of this, I don't, if you look at page one seventeen, it breaks it out to about seven thousand a year in shelter house, and then the baseball stadium is about another two thousand, so.
And this is a shelter house that's like filled up every, that, like, running out of space in?
Correct.
But what's the, what's the rental fee?
Very cheap.
Yeah, it's.
Forty dollars.
It's gonna be one that we are increasing along with all of the rest cars, I mean, is it thirty bucks a day, forty?
Forty.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's any, if there's any, building new first season shelter app, we're gonna.
But what's, what's the demand, I mean, the ones that we have, what's the demand on those?
They're pretty, pretty high.
Full.
They're full, during the summer months, south side and grand, there is, south side a little bit more because it has heating and air conditioning.
But that's the only climate-controlled one, okay, but, and then Grand Park's the only other one that's as a rentable, enclosed? Otherwise, it's kind of an open, first come, first served.
Everything's open, you can still pay to reserve it, but it's generally first come, first served.
Okay.
Jack, when you say full, are you just talking about the two Grand Park?
Correct.
And south side, just those two?
Mainly those two.
Okay, but then a lot of other ones get a lot of reservations.
Yeah.
The open ones, all over town.
Yes.
And those are the same price?
Those are cheaper.
Okay, how much?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five for them.
Yeah.
And you'll look at.
Forty to forty-five, pictures of the enclosed.
You'll look at.
Forty, forty-five for the enclosed.
Those will go up this year, yes.
Okay.
Those will be going up this year.
So for a couple months, I had Jill, Jill down there, you know, give me some numbers on how many calls she gets, and it's like ten, fifteen a month. It's all filled up that they would like to rent something that we don't have anything available.
Yeah.
On the all-year-round ones.
Uh, miscellaneous revenues, those attribute to the state baseball tournament, um, in this year, I've actually increased that. Um, just to also reflect the ICCAC tournament, cause they're gonna be basically paying the same wage per game, um, and then along in miscellaneous is any donations, uh, miscellaneous refunds. That one's pretty rare, but happens sometimes. Um, park project donations, a major one of that is our benches, our park benches that we get for memorials. So, we have a price, we work with a third-party company, somebody wants to do a memorial bench for somebody, they just directly go through us, pay the city, and then we get the bench installed. Um, major increase is personnel services. Uh, if you're looking on fifty-one, it doesn't reflect it really well, but on one seventeen, it shows a very large decrease in our overall services and commodities. We did take the Emerald Ash Borer removal out of Parks and Rec, and that will be, what was, where was that put?
It is actually in the local sales tax as a fiscal twenty-five expenditure request.
Correct.
We're currently not under contract, but we are working on the project.
Yep, Randy's not out for bid yet, but basically all of, everything on our public grounds, parks, cemetery, golf course, green spaces, um, those are all mainly taken care of, so that's why there is a shift out of our department.
So the ones, these ash trees that are in the city right-of-way, when, is that when we're gonna start addressing these and it's kind of a first come?
Well, they've been prioritized now.
Yeah, they've been prioritized.
Selected the first round.
Okay.
About sixty trees, and, uh, now we just need to get it out on the street.
How many, how many total are there in the city right-of-way?
About four hundred.
Do we have, so obviously, city's paying to, to remove these, do we have something as an ordinance that you are not able to plant another tree in the city right-of-way, to where the city is not paying to remove trees in the future?
Yeah, the, the current ordinance restricts or prohibits planting trees within twelve feet of the back of curb. On a fifty-foot right-of-way, that puts it outside the right-of-way. But a lot of our right-of-ways in the, this second and original town subdivisions are eighty feet. So it would permit trees back in that eighty-foot right-of-way, just twelve feet back of curb. The other, the only caveat to the ordinance is on Main Street, you can plant if the ordinance permits planting within eight feet of the back of curb. So that's, that's the current ordinance, and, you know, if there's more restriction, completely restricted from right-of-way, that would take an ordinance change.
I just, you know, I say twenty years from now, you know, people are planting trees and we're going back through doing this again, I, I wouldn't wanna see, you know, the city paying to remove trees that, you know, we did now, so.
Exactly.
Think it's something we look at when.
No, it was, pretty much what's happened, for your information, Dutch Elm disease took most of the trees out of the right-of-way. They got planted back, and now we're taking the ash trees out, you know, that's pretty much what happened.
Yeah.
So those are our, our current ordinance, I know there's all these different prevents, twenty years from now, when killer oak comes, that we're, we're not cutting down, four hundred oak trees within the right-of-way.
Well, ye- yes and no, um, on fifty-foot right-of-ways is planting in the right-of-way would be, in effect, prohibited under the current ordinance. Because it says twelve feet back of curb prohibition, and there, on a fifty-foot right-of-way, there's actually eleven feet, so you're out of the right-of-way. On an eighty-foot right-of-way, though, you could still plant a tree within twelve feet of the back of curb, and you'd be in the right-of-way.
Yeah, so we need to change the ordinance then, so that we're not, when killer oak comes, our kids aren't paying to remove four hundred fifty trees, right?
Yeah.
Just, yes.
When you say eighty foot, you're talking about the length of the, what, what is, what are you referring to?
Uh, the right, right-of-way width, the center of the street, forty feet, which way would be public property in this, uh, mostly in the original town plat and the, the first and second edition plats.
It is twenty-twenty-five, I just picked the oak tree just randomly, I don't wanna.
The Jake's.
You said eleven feet, you said eleven feet from the curb? Or twelve?
The eleven feet is pretty much the right-of-way behind the curb on a fifty-foot total right-of-way width.
Okay.
The code restricts or prohibits within twelve feet of the back of curb.
So in perspective, that's basically from the curb to a sidewalk?
To the backside, the sidewalk.
Okay, so people just know.
Yeah.
Who monitors this?
Uh, pretty much no one. I mean, trees are planted on the weekends, I mean, I can monitor that, drive down a street, no tree, drive down a street on Monday, tree, you know.
I figured if you have a standard ordinance that's in place for twenty years, and if a tree grows there, you understand that that is not the city's response, you know what I mean, that's not, this ordinance has been there for, people take it a lot better when the ordinance has been there for twenty, twenty-five years, like, we're not, you know, we're not taking out the tree, if it's a standard across the board, you, you're still gonna get some pushback, I, I got it, but I mean, it's, it's easier to stomach than, you know.
The, it's state code requires the city to maintain those trees in the right-of-way. To, to remove dead wood from the right-of-way, so we remove dead trees. Now, there, there are a lot of residents that remove trees from the right-of-way that aren't dead, they do it on their own nickel. But when you get into Dutch Elm disease, Emerald Ash Borer, those are dead trees, and pretty much the state code governs that, the removal.
What I can see is twenty years from now, how do you know if it was planted after we did our ordinance or before the ordinance, that's gonna be a tough call.
Yeah, actually, the ordinance includes, or exempts trees that were pr- planted before something like September of nineteen seventy-two. So if there's anybody that knows that tree was planted before September of seventy-two, its grandfather did.
We can count rings.
It would be.
After it's down.
We can count rings.
And people don't, they don't change.
I think you gotta start somewhere, though.
Yeah, I think it needs to be standardized, so it's easy, so it's not if you have an eighty foot, if you have a, that's where it gets confusing, a standard twelve feet from the curb.
Well, because you have different right-of-way widths, you have different authorities, you know, within an eighty-foot right-of-way, you've got eighty feet worth of authority. So you can, you can say no trees in this eighty feet, but on fifty-foot right-of-way, you couldn't say no trees within eighty feet, because you don't have that authority, you've got fifty feet worth. So, yeah, it's gonna vary a little bit.
So is ordinance as good as it can be, or is there modifications that we can make there?
If you want to prohibit trees from the right-of-way, that would be a modification.
Okay.
And, and that, you know, is, is not a difficult modification to make, it's a difficult one to enforce.
Yeah. Luckily, we only have law-abiding citizens that live in our community. There we go.
Alright, alright, so to continue on, uh, there will be some changes to the revenues, and it will be reflected in expenses coming up, um, that I will have to alter for this, but the exact same amount that's coming out will be going in. We did just find out that we got an Iowa DNR grant for about twelve thousand dollars worth of new trees. So, pretty exciting, they just announced it like last week, it's not really meant to go fully public yet, but there will be a little bit of a tweak to this budget just to, to get that, and I think that's for about sixty to sixty-five trees, so.
Do they provide the trees to us, or do we?
We have to get them, so we have to find an arborist or an arboretum that would be working a lot with the state, or that is from Iowa. So we are dividing it up between a couple from Iowa, and there's even one in Nebraska that we're gonna work with, just because we don't wanna see the ash tree or Dutch Elm disease again, we want a wide variety of native trees. And everything that gets planted and approved through the Iowa DNR is, has to be a native to Iowa tree.
And these are going back in the parks?
Parks, golf course, cemetery, public spaces.
Okay. Not right-of-ways.
Not, not right-of-ways. Absolutely not. Ordinance or not, capital requests, we got a couple of items here, uh, we got park tables and trash cans for five thousand. Um, we've got some decorative trash cans in kind of the downtown business district that we're gonna purchase along with some park tables. Normally, every year we rehab as many of the park tables as we can, it's just wood on a metal frame, a lot of our metal frames are probably fifty years old, so just getting some of those replaced, adding the new wood to them, going from there. Um, playground repairs, we have several older playgrounds, they're not quite needing full replacement, but there are some items on there that either need plastic welding, parts replaced, um, stairs completely re-coated, items like that, that we wanna try and be as proactive as we can, that way we're not having to replace a whole playground because of one or two pieces. Um, batting cage, we got the batting cage on the east side of field seven that we're gonna completely redo and have it kind of mirror the one on the other side of field seven. Uh, fence topping, so that's, uh, the protective yellow tiling that is on top of all the outfield fence. Uh, we noticed this past year, and we have to replace them every probably four to five years, different fields, obviously, they last about ten, twelve years. Um, just getting really brittle, a lot of the fence coming up through the top, so we're gonna get those proactively replaced, and then putting a hundred thousand dollars away for the Grand Park lighting project, so.
The, the batting cages, are they reserved, or?
No, nope, they're just open to come in use.
And as far as the maintenance, maintenance on this field, have you, we talked about it.
Yep, I put a little extra money away, so, yeah, and I had a talk with Zach Kaufman, I've got that meeting with, uh, with Ben, probably in the next couple of days, but I've been working with their baseball program and talking about different updates we can do. Oh, for sure, it's, it's.
Organization.
It's everybody, yeah.
Someone, so something, for sure.
And that's all I've got for parks, move on to page fifty-three, uh, golf course, that's also reflected on one nineteen, one twenty on the GL side. Um, real, really no operational differences this year, the last, uh, the last three years continue to can, just keep increasing our membership numbers and our revenue, so, um, very, very good to see, um. Now it's just maintenance, it's getting the playability, just because of all the high traffic, it's just a lot of upkeep right now. Um, personnel services, the only thing that jumped, we did cut a decent amount from services, commodities. Uh, capital outlay, we are replacing a, let's say it's an eighteen-year-old utility vehicle, it's on its last leg, and a bed knife grinder, so a bed knife is the very bottom cutting edge that our reel mowers basically pinch that grass point against, so we personally grind everything in-house. Uh, there are a lot of places that send it, send each one of them out, we have about forty, forty-two reels, I believe, that we go through and sharpen, and it is very meticulous, it does take a decent amount of time. Um, the bed knife grinder is twenty-six years old and just becoming dangerous. So, it's got some springs that are no longer able to replace, so if the wrong person is trying to utilize it, something could happen, so. Those are our two capital requests for, for golf. Any questions on golf?
This is one of the lowest deficit years I've seen for a long time.
Yeah, and that's just projected, I, I think the utility vehicle will come in probably closer to eighteen thousand. The bed knife grinder, I think, is gonna be right around nineteen, twenty thousand. Um, and then just the also unknown of where our, you know, our chemicals are gonna be, our, our fertilizer's gonna be, cause that was our, honestly, our biggest jumps that we've had at the golf course, is just those supplies, year after year, how much they go up. There's no questions, we'll move on to rec center. Um, initiatives, you know, looking for options to engage our past members and attract new, new programs and fitness options and update our confusing and dated memberships. We have a meeting with park board at the end of this month and will hopefully have enough to come and present for our rate change in March. Memberships have been good. They continue to climb. The personnel services, you see a major jump, but that is because we did bring on, um, I don't remember what it was, thirty-three percent of that maintenance person for cleaning duties. And then obviously, that's reflected in services commodities as well.
Is that working now?
Yeah, he's doing a great job. Yep. Um, one area in, in there that I will note, you know, we wanted to cut more from this budget. Obviously, with a brand-new heating system, HVAC system, we switched all from electric to gas. We have not gone one full year of that operation working correctly yet. So we basically just decided to keep our estimates for gas and electric where they are. That way, next year, we'll have a much better idea, or when it comes to reestimate season, we'll be able to cut those back to see where we need to be. But it's kind of hard with new systems just to complete guess at where we're gonna be.
And your revenue over here projected doesn't include the rate base?
It does a little bit. So with first talks with park board, you know, we're looking at maybe around ten percent. So whenever I think of an increase, I also usually have a kind of a standard deviation of possibly losing two percent of your membership. Now, this doesn't reflect it very well, but just because of the timing of it, we don't know what our, our masses of people are gonna be doing. So right now, that is what I'm gonna put in there, and then when it comes to reestimate season, I'll have a much better number to kind of gauge that upon.
Said there's been an increase in memberships? How much?
It trickles, but it's obviously this time of year. We always see a lot more people joining November, December, January than any other time of the year. Um, I mean, just numbers of walk-in or day-to-day use, or monthly use, I should say. Our highest month on average is usually November. December, it lowers a little bit. January is also pretty high, February high, and then it usually drops off just because nicer weather and everything.
What's the, what's the daily use on that?
Daily use, it's quite a bit. I mean, for the month of January, it's usually right around six thousand check-ins a month. November's our highest, and that's eighty-eight hundred check-ins a month. So, a lot of foot traffic.
I missed what your lowest was. You said eighty-eight hundred?
Lowest is usually August, and last year it was at forty-eight hundred. So, still quite a bit of foot traffic, and that's just check-ins. That's anybody using our twenty-four-hour fit, or twenty-four-hour access. It's anybody coming in, utilizing our classes, and that's anybody just coming in regularly using the rec, whether it's membership or paying a daily admittance.
So you're lower than about a hundred and sixty?
About three hundred a day.
And you're higher than?
Nearly double, a shy double.
Probably double, yeah. So your lowest, you're a hundred and sixty a day, your highest, you're a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
I think at one time you did a study, per capita, we're one of the highest in the state.
Yeah, so generally, for a healthy population, you wanna see twenty-five percent of your people utilizing some sort of wellness center. Well, I mean, we have just about twenty-five percent in our center. We know that, you know, I don't, I don't foresee any of the other businesses, private businesses here in town as competition. You know, I do think they provide an awesome service. I'm happy that they're all in town because if all of those people had to come to our center, we'd have zero room for them. It's basically just comfort level for each and every individual. Some people like twenty-four-hour fitness more, some people like platinum more, some people like us more, so.
How much of an increase have you seen since the new renovation?
Kind of hard to track just because we haven't still gone that full year. We're right about that point. Um, but I'll go back and review the numbers for, I mean, obviously, this is data from last year. So I have a decent amount, but we are also partially open for some of this. So still under construction. So once I have some of that data.
Have you seen an increase, I guess?
For sure, for sure.
I go there quite often and just to track. It seems like there's always people on the track.
Yeah.
Guess we'll see you next year.
Yep. Um, only capital request is going to be exercise equipment. We are looking at getting rid of some of our um, single-stack weight equipment and some of our big towers. Pulleys are going out in them. Some of the weights are chipping. We're constantly replacing cables. Um, they're twenty years old, probably.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, so there's a lot more sleek machines out there, as in they take up a whole lot less space. Um, each one of ours currently is just one motion, tricep extension, that's all it does. Leg extension, that's all it does. So we're looking at some combo units as well. So have a little more space and have a little more functionality with the, the equipment that we have. Any questions on rec? Okay, move to leisure services. That is on page fifty-seven and also reflected on one twenty-one and one twenty-two. Uh, we're continuing our coaching camps, umpire camps, and our Kick It Up soccer tournament. Those have all been very successful the last few years, so we're gonna continue doing those.
How many do you have at these, like, coaches camp and home camps?
The coaching camps that we did for baseball, softball, baseball, I think we had about eighteen parents come. Uh, the softball was a little lower, it was about six, I wanna say. Um, last year, we actually didn't even have a softball coaches clinic. The coaches just couldn't find time to, to meet, so. Um, we do the same with soccer and some of our other leagues. Depending on which sport, we have been seeing some good increase in participation, especially in our special events. A lot of those are getting some really good use, so we're looking at others to add. We've tried a couple last year. You know, our Kids Night Out is our most successful event that we host. Um, we did try an end of season one last year outside at the pool. Late August, I think the only weekend available was like the week right before school started. Wasn't attended very well, so we either gonna look at changing the dates of that or ax that one altogether. Um, we're looking at doing some pickleball open houses to see what kind of participation we're gonna have. And then from there, possibly do some tournaments or leagues of our own while working with the Pickleball Association. Um, then we've got some other kind of fun things that we'd like to try and implement over the next year, whether try them out or more or less revamp some of our current dwindling sports.
I would try to move the pool onto the last day of school, something like that, before people get started on vacation and, you know what I mean, everything else.
Yeah. Being as late as it was, it was just, it just didn't work out.
Done with summer.
Yeah, for sure. And I think that's actually what we called it, bummer, 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 end of summer, something like that. And yeah, no one was too bummed out, so.
How much used to get out of the racquetball court yet?
Pretty light.
You just, you mentioned things that are dwindling, so.
That's one that's definitely dwindling. It's just...
A lot of people in there stretching and doing other things.
Correct. They use it as stretching space.
I pretty well know who still plays and it's down there.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, that's it, isn't it? Same ones I...
It was still pretty cold out. I seen in the summer, every time I drove by, there was...
No, 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 on the racquetball courts. Racquetball courts.
There's always things to get rid of.
No, pickleball is a huge thing.
Yeah, it was like, somebody always down there.
You, you could put pickleball courts all over and people would use them.
And that's included in that Grand Park lighting, right? So kind of trying to light that up.
Yeah, will be.
People can use that later in the, in the summer.
And that rec center open, I would say racquetball was like pickleball. I mean, you could not get on court.
There was like a whole day waiting line to get in.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
People changed.
You can sign up early.
Everything comes and goes. Dumbbell rack?
I've been in that racquetball since I even knew him.
Well, I'm just telling you. You know where the dumbbell rack is, right? So if you're standing facing the dumbbell rack, it's to your left.
Door. So behind the squat racks, the mirrors are right there. It's behind those mirrors.
I'm just asking to bring my kids in there with their tennis ball.
There used to be two of them, and they were both full all the time. They put weights in the one, or tore it out.
Governor, you know, and Will are gonna learn how to play racquetball the hard way.
Um, no capital requests for this year. Um, otherwise, that's leisure services. Aquatic Center, we have been seeing some good, good number increases. Um, that's both a good and a bad. I, I sat through a session not too long ago and had some conversations with staff that COVID kind of really hurt people trying to learn to swim. Take a full year off of not being able to swim. Um, then we went through some lifeguard struggles the last couple of years. I'm not saying they're still not there, but we didn't have the ability to pump out as many swim lessons as we normally would like to. Um, so we've found that a lot of kids are basically a year behind on trying to learn how to swim. We're not only seeing that with our kids, we're also seeing that with our lifeguards. So we have a lot of people that wanna apply, they just can't swim. So we're actually setting up a couple of clinics for interested lifeguards where we're gonna teach them how to swim. We're gonna help them learn how to swim so they can pass our, the tests that are mandated to be able to be passed to become a lifeguard. So this past year, we have seen our numbers in swim, swim team increase as well as swim lessons increase. So that should help when it comes to safety towards the summer. Um, really no capital requests there. Um, the reciprocal card that we've used, it sounds like everyone, I'm waiting on one more, but it sounds like everybody in the county is on board to do that again. We had fantastic results with that, and I think all our surrounding communities did as well. That's Aquatic Center Cemetery. Um, not much changed in Cemetery. You'll see a small pre-increase in Personnel Services, um, while the wage of the full-timer did go up. Um, we had, we normally had three part-timers out there. The last two or three years, we haven't really been able to find a third. Uh, we've had our pretty main two part-timers that keep coming back year after year, and we've been able to stay ahead of it. So we just took those wages from that other part-time position and are gonna ax those for right now. Service and commodities, um, we did make some cuts there as well as it was inflated a little bit last year because we did have some minor equipment purchases. So, I mean, that's more than five percent cut right here, but that's because we did have some equipment purchases that fell off. Um, we don't anticipate any capital outlay either in that department. Um, I think next is... Tab Q, page one eighty. Really, it's gonna show the park development side on page one eighty. That was already talked about when we were talking about the parks. So that's your Grand Park lighting, that's tables, benches, ballfield repair, um, items like that. Golf course doesn't have anything. I don't believe anybody has anything in the new budget year. Um, going back to Aquatic Center, I did have in the CIP a hundred and fifty thousand for this upcoming fiscal year. Uh, that would be to completely sand or soda blast the basin of the pool, take out all caulking. The caulking in it hasn't been redone in a long time. Um, we've been doing our own repairs to it, but it's getting, so it's mainly all repaired work. So we are gonna start losing some water through those, those joints um, unless we completely overhaul that basin. So it'll be sandblasting, all-new caulking, and then painting over the top of that. So that's what that hundred and fifty thousand is.
Before or after this season?
It'll be after. So we will likely get the specs, get a lot of that out for either RFP or for bid. And then the time window, we will want it to be done like early spring. It can be done in the fall, but that also means winter. Winter. So that's the main damager of all the paint in the pool basin along with the caulking is the freeze thaw, the leaves that get in there and stain the paint. So I'd rather have it done in the spring so we're not having to, you know, wash everything ourselves. But just also, it depends on the company's availabilities. So that would probably likely be a spring of twenty-six.
How much life do the slides have left?
Slides are in great shape. Slides are in great shape. They may require some touch-up painting at some point. They're fading pretty good, but little.
Are you greasing those with, those rates too, or?
We are not in this year. We are fairly ahead of all of our local pools. Um, I would strongly suggest like keeping it just about where it is for a little while. Um, with other wage or with other increases, golf, we just did last year. So every two years is probably a good, and looking regionally at other comparable golf courses, we're right there where, where we, where we should be, so. The pardon tab S, that's the rec trust fund, that'd be page two oh six, two oh seven. There's really nothing there. We don't anticipate utilizing that. Um, and then tab V is our rec creation center permanent trust fund, and all that's just gonna reflect is the interest gained on that account. And then under tab U, it's just showing some of the, some of the projects we're finishing up through our CIP, whether it's the golf course pump station, um, merchants parks improvements. Uh, the page before that, I believe, is Vision Iowa. So that's revenues for the merchants park, just some of the grants that have come in. Not a whole lot to report on those. So, other than that, that's about all I've got for parks and rec. Any questions?
We talked about it yesterday, there was, not yesterday, the day before, there's four hundred thousand dollars allocated for a shed.
We draw for a shed. We've put that in the last couple of years. So in the CIP, I mean, you guys can dictate where that ends up. I mean, it's something that's either gonna need to be completely replaced or fully overhauled. It was put in twenty-twenty-seven, for the year twenty-twenty-seven, two years ago, and basically just stayed there. It can be bumped back. And basically just stayed there. It can be bumped back, it can be moved forward. Obviously, it's not gonna be moved forward, but. Um, really, that's just us trying to plan for a five-year outlook.
I, I think that building, when I, after I was elected, I walked through the, the buildings. Seeing that building was eye-opening of how rundown it was. Now, I don't think the four fifty, I mean, if you rebuild a, kinda Jason's part, I don't think we do it for four fifty, just time you have engineering and everything. But I think it definitely needs, I think it definitely needs help. And I think on, on retention of employees, you know, and, and looks out there. But I don't know, like employees having to work out of there.
Keeps on getting kicked down the road because all this other stuff comes up. At what point in time are we gonna prioritize within that budget? You know what I mean? This needs to be.
Well, that's mainly a council decision, so.
That's part of the strategic planning session.
It, it is part of the council, but when, when you blow a budget every year, it's really hard to, to prioritize it. Does that make sense internally to yourself? You have those other stuff coming in. Like you as a section head, I believe, also has to take responsibility and like I need to prioritize this. I might have to say no here because I need to prioritize the maintenance. And so, when the easy fault is the blame on us, cause we.
We're not, we're not blaming anybody, but, uh, typically, uh. And that, that works in your capital improvement plan, which isn't, which isn't your general fund or anything like that. That's typically either a internal, internal loan or a, a debt service type thing. When you're talking about a four hundred thousand dollar expense or a five hundred thousand dollar expense for a building.
Yeah, but either you need to prioritize yourself, cause I remember when you and Tom were talking about the merchants park. It was like, I have nothing that I need for two years. Like, I mean, so, you know what I mean? Like, I have no big projects for two years, like, so, I mean.
That was no big projects for merchant park. That wasn't no big projects for everything else.
No, that was, no, that wasn't.
No. We, we had that conversation within.
It was actually no big, he said, you have no big projects, no big projects for two years.
I, I don't, I don't recall that statement that way. I'm not worried about it. Well, well, we plan it in our debt service like we always do or with, with our local office sales tax and that's how we do it.
Yeah, well, words have meaning sometimes, right?
Would we need, uh, expanding that building along with renovating?
I wouldn't say it'd be a much bigger expansion than we need.
Just cause you mentioned there's more members, I thought.
All equipment inside. I mean, currently, not a huge deal, but we do take all of our golf carts down to the Grand Park Shelter House. To store for the winter. There's many of them still fit down there.
Where to?
The Grand Park Shelter House during the winter.
Okay.
So, we put a lot of those there. We have several tractors and mowers down there. And that just becomes a hassle because at some point you need to bring them up, service them. So, it's just kinda rotating them through spaces. It would be nice to expand a little bit just to be able, not so much the, the golf carts. But at least our, our equipment that's getting used all the time.
Is there even a bathroom in that building?
There's a bathroom.
Alright, I don't remember seeing one since.
Chad, have you thought about, um, at, working with Chris, applying for grants? They, Timmerman and Renzi Grants do a lot of outdoor, maybe Jack you would know too, that maybe, um, try and get some grant money. To kickstart it for whatever. Yeah.
I'm gonna guess that's gonna be a no.
You think so? Boy, they do a lot of, you don't think so, okay.
I'll ask Chris and see what his thoughts are. They, they like, things are gonna make communal impacts.
Yeah.
And where that more or less just affects our workers.
If, if you ever find out the insurance situation, that, that Northwest Shelter would be a good one.
For sure.
They do shelters, playground equipment, a ton of outdoors stuff, yeah. And the Carroll community grant too, yeah.
Thank you, Chad.
Nope, that's the budget in a nutshell. Any other questions, concerns?
Uh, maybe we could review the timing of approving this.
We were arguing, we were arguing about that today.
Arguing?
So, okay, so from a state timeline perspective. Is we have to have the levy set by March fifth.
Okay.
It, which really then can probably write the whole question. Um, so we were planning on having council make a final determination on that stuff and sending the first public hearing at the February twenty-fourth meeting. So, depending on if council wants to discuss anything more with budget on the upcoming meeting Monday on February ten. We do have something on the agenda right now for a final budget discussion. If there's additional information you want, you gotta let us know now. So, we can be prepared to talk about that on Monday. Um, and then we'll, so then, so on February twenty-fourth is the final day. Would we would wanna set the public hearing for our first budget hearing, which basically we're having a public hearing on the levy proposal.
I thought you said it had to be set by March fifth.
Sorry, so we'll set the date.
Okay, you mean the date.
So, on the February twenty-fourth meeting, we will set the date for that first public hearing to be held on March twenty-fourth. The actual public hearing, but we have to have all the information to the county by March fifth.
Yeah, okay.
Cause the county will mail out, if you recall from last year, the county mails out that proposed property tax limit statement to all the taxpayers. And that goes out on March fifteenth, that gets mailed March fifteenth. So, we can't hold a public hearing on that information until after March twentieth, which we happen to have a council meeting on March twenty-fourth.
Okay.
So, we're planning on holding that public hearing on March twenty-fourth. On that night, we'll hold that and then we'll also set the public hearing for the whole entire budget at the first meeting in April. And then after that, if the budget is approved, it has to be filed with the state and the county by the end of April.
So, I would need more information, I guess, the next one about the airport corporate hanger.
Which, what would you like to know about that? I can give you as much as I can tonight if you'd like.
Guess we start from the start.
Okay, well, obviously, I don't, the airport board takes care of most of that. Um, the majority of the cost for that are gonna be through federal grants and state grants. The cost from the city side would be funded through the increase in revenue. From the increase in hangar rent, which is about, I think, last, when I was talking to Mr. Seaman about it. I think it was about thirty thousand dollars a year. So, it would take ten to fifteen years to pay off our portion of that. But that would increase the, the amount of hang, well, i- it would increase the amount of space for the hangars. Most of those hangars out there right now, from my understanding, are full. They would like and could handle more airplanes out there if we could have more hangar space. Which would increase the hangar rental, which would increase the amount of money we get to pay off the new hangar.
So, what corporate, this is a corporate, is there some kind of corporate that's kicking in money as well, the corporation kicking in money as well?
They, they would be paying for the rent, so they would be renting the space. So, we would use federal dollars, which they get about three hundred thousand dollars over the next two years. Along with a hundred and fifty thousand the following year. And they've got some money left over from the, uh, lighting this last year that they would be using to build the hangar. Along with our funds to, or the city funds to help pay for that. And then, of course, but the court, yeah, but.
We're basically, how many corporations are using this?
Or how many have come to them and said that they need something big enough to put their corporate plane in?
There's a couple, one of which is McLaughlin really wants a larger hangar so that they can put a bigger corporate jet in. There's others that they've been talking to that would like, uh, would like more space. Because the, the jets are getting bigger, so they'd like more space. Um, one of the, one of the, one of the things that, or planes that, uh, Greg pointed out is the, um. Oh, shoot, now I can't think of it. The ki- the organ flight, what are the organ flight things that come to the hospital? No, no, it's, it's when they come in with. Yeah, a hard or something like that. Um, anyway, they, they have planes that can't be stored in the, in the hangar there because it's, they're too big. And they've wanted to store over a cou- couple times a week over the, and I think it was twice in one week here very recently. So, there, there, there's opportunities for them to increase their revenue to continue to provide a good service. And add a minimal cost to the city, quite frankly.
My understanding of McLaughlin jet is they'd like it right, they'd like it yesterday.
McLaughlin?
Yeah, because they're already parking it in a whole different airport from where.
Well, they wanna, they wanna get a bigger jet that would fit and that's so that they can get to other places. And, and that's one of the things that they, they would like to keep stored here. Um, the concern is, is if they, if they have to store that jet somewhere else or store it down in Mississippi, then that's when the cor- the corporate office moves.
Right.
So, New Way's saying that they, they can't store their jet, they're going to Mississippi.
That's, that's not what I said. The concern is that that would happen because they have a.
Three hundred plus employee factory down there right now.
Correct, and so they.
And how many employees do they have here?
About the same.
Three hundred and something here?
Here in Scranton?
Between here and Scranton.
Here in Carroll.
Oh, we are.
Carroll and Scranton.
Yeah.
Probably more in Scranton.
Wherein? Oh, it's huge.
Yeah.
Need a road trip, Jason.
And they're not chipping anything into this? Have we also approached them?
Well, they're pay, they're paying a monthly rent. So, it's, it's our, it's our facility. We're utilizing federal dollars and state grant dollars, which you get every year. And if, if you can, and you can bank them up for a four-year period, but once you get to that four-year period, if you haven't spent the fourth year in the, in the rear. Then you just flat out lose those funds. So, they're banking those four years up to pay for the majority of the costs from federal funds. Then they're also getting, I forget what they, the state funds, which is. Is that state funds?
Yeah, it cost us, it's gonna cost us three hundred and five thousand, five hundred dollars.
So, the increase in rent, that would be your ten to fifteen-year payback.
How much federal money they getting?
They're projecting eight hundred and, you got it there in front of you?
The to- the total federal and state is over a million.
Yeah.
For a thirteen, for a one million, three hundred thousand dollar hangar.
Yep.
How many new plane, how many planes will we be able to store?
They want, they're talking about a hundred by a hundred. I am not an airport expert, I don't know. Um, I know they're talking at least two or three more bigger jets in that. Which could, if, if some of the smaller jets then went or sold or moved, then that opens up space for other people to put smaller jets there. Greg was telling me there's, there's a jet over in Dennison that would like to come over here. There's another one. I forget where, there, there's a couple jets that they would like to recruit, but they just don't have the space to bring.
And how long is a contract with them gonna be?
Contract with who?
With these.
It's our, it's our facility, so we wouldn't have a contract.
Well, there needs to be some kind of a contract that some.
Well, you need a lease for the.
For them to rent it.
Oh, the lease?
Yeah, the lease, lease contract.
I've never dealt with that. I've never dealt with an airport lease. I don't know what that is or what that looks like.
Well, these are questions that we kinda need to know, you know what I mean, like.
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, we can do that. That's a next year's project though, so.
Yeah, but in this year's budget, the five thou- five thousand, five hundred.
Well.
Five thousand dollars, I would like to know, I don't wanna put.
I, I can, I can ask that information from the airport board, how long a normal lease is and stuff like that.
Yeah, I don't need to frustrate you, but before I spend five thousand dollars, I just wanna make sure that.
Well, they're, they're probably planning on spending that five thousand dollars out of their own budget, so they're not, that's not something.
Oh, is that the case? That's coming out of their budget?
Yeah. Cause we, cause we don't have it budgeted or funded out of anything else.
I assume they would wanna know how long the lease is, you know what I mean, before we, like, before they spend their five thousand, they probably know where we stand. So, we need to know how long that lease would be for.
Well, I can ask them that. I, I can't give you that answer. I don't know that answer.
What do they bring in on crops? Fifty thousand a year?
That is about right.
Go right into our general fund?
Well, we use that port towards their expenses.
Okay.
So, that we, yes, it goes into the general fund, but it's, it's on page, I was just looking at it, where'd it go?
It goes into the pot.
It's on page one hundred, under tab G.
So, so they bring in.
Oh, this last year was only forty-five, but prior year were over fifty.
Yeah, fifty, and then they project about twenty-six thousand in revenue. Is what they bring in overall.
How much, how much?
Twenty-four, twenty-six thousand, four hundred for revenue, plus fifty thousand for farm income. About four hundred dollars they had projected for miscellaneous revenues.
Yeah, I just wanna know a little bit.
Okay.
Anything else?
So, what, what do we do to make sure, what we'll plan on, like, kind of a final wrap-up discussion Monday night, right?
Yeah. Alright, we have a motion and a second adjournment. Tom, motion, Jason, second.
Alright, we'll call Tom and Jason.
Yes.
JJ, yes, Laverne.
Yep.